Becky, do you want to give us the thumbs up when you can see it?
I can see it on my screen now, I think. Okay, let's start the meeting. So, good evening everyone and welcome to the meeting this evening. My name's Anita Collier and I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. We are live streaming on YouTube and Becky will be tweeting live.
When you can see it.
Sorry? Sorry, Sarah. Okay. Yeah, we will be live streaming on YouTube and Becky will be tweeting live updates as we go through the meeting. Would all participants, that's town councillors and staff, please mute yourselves until I ask you to speak? And can you please use the blue electronic hand if you want to make a point? Which is at the bottom of your screen if you'd like to speak. Will councillors please vote using the blue hand as well? So that that vote can be recorded by Paul as we go through. Paul, of course, is the town clerk. And please forgive me if I end a session in order to go to a vote if we get short of time on any particular issue. We have a few attendees registered today and you're all very welcome. And please could I ask that all attendees pose their questions through the Q and A board? That would be really helpful. And when that happens, of course, we'll patch you in so that you can speak. And be seen if you'd like to. Rachel will be moderating the Q and A board and we'll moderate the questions. So first item on the agenda is apologies. So Paul, do we have any apologies for this evening?
Yes, we've got one from Rich Ackroyd.
Thank you. And declaration of councillors' interests. Is there anything on the agenda that councillors would like to declare an interest in this evening, please? Nothing? Okay, thank you. And approval of the minutes. Assuming you've all read the minutes, could I have a proposal? To approve the minutes, please. John, thank you very much. And a second? Thank you. And now we're going to come to any questions and comments from councillors and members of the public.
Anita, we just need to vote on the minutes.
I beg your pardon. Right, can we take a vote on the minutes? All in favour, please?
Sorry, I seem to have lost my blue hand, but my hand is up.
Okay, in that case, there is a majority. Ellie Barclay, I can't see your hand up, is that? Oh, you are up. Okay. That's unanimous then.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, Paul. Okay. So questions and comments from councillors and staff? And members of the public. So if I take questions from councillors first, are there any questions? This evening? Not that I can see. Adam, you have a question? Adam Boyden?
Hello, yes, I'm trying to unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, hello. Yes, I know East Hill, the development or otherwise, is on your agenda for planning meeting tomorrow. But I was wondering if there's anyone here who had any questions, I can give an update. From the Mendip point of view, in that there is a cabinet meeting now arranged for next week, Thursday 26th of November, half six. Because the consideration of the Affordable and Social Housing Programme, which did include East Hill, is being reconsidered. Next week at Cabinet, because on Monday evening, scrutiny board unanimously agreed to refer it back to Cabinet. Because I and other councillors, including Janine Nash, Drew Gardner, Helen Sport. Why? We proposed that it was called in and it was and it was agreed. So it's being reconsidered next week and we're hopeful that a different recommendation will be on the table for that time. But we have to wait for the report, which isn't yet published, last time I looked.
Is that public? Is that meeting public? Can we watch it?
If anyone's interested.
It's a public meeting.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
You can watch Monday scrutiny board as well if you really want, spend an hour or three. Yes.
That's great. Thank you very much for the update, Adam. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Anita, Sarah's got a hand up.
Sarah? Thank you. There were people, men in yellow coats, spray painting patches of grass on the site today. They were reported to police and they were seen off. Why has this not stopped already? It's already been referred back to the scrutiny board. Why are people still there doing things to the site?
On that. I can also give an answer. As far as I know, Mendip District Council instructed all contractors and all interested parties to stop work, to stop going to site. But that happened anyway. So that's being investigated as to why that happened.
Okay, because if it weren't for a particular resident keeping an eye out for that, we wouldn't know.
Absolutely. Yes, I know. Yeah, it's been, it's been, there's been a discussion about that today within Mendip Council. And I can't explain it and I'm assuming that someone didn't take instructions properly. But Mendip tried to stop that, as far as I know.
Okay, well, because the next fallout, yeah, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thanks, Adam. Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions from attendees or from you as councillors? Okay. In that case, we'll go on to the third item on the agenda, which is a verbal update from Kate Haddad, Community Development Manager, on the work that's been going on in the council during this lockdown. So over to you, Kate. Thank you.
Hi. Yeah, so as many of you know, during the first lockdown, we completely redeployed our entire staff team and went into a Covid response mode. To support residents in Freeman, particularly to support people who were isolated and weren't able to have access to food, shopping prescriptions and other necessary services. We did all of that alongside our local partners and in particular Mendip Health Connections, Active and In Touch and Freme Community Drivers. And so in preparation for a potential second lockdown, we worked with them to look at what those services might look like, what we might need. And I'm pleased to say we were pretty prepared for what might arise and the issues that might arise. So we've handed over the Shop For Me service that we developed first time round, which is a bespoke shopping service supported by volunteers for individuals and families that are isolated and at home and don't have access to food, particularly those that are clinically vulnerable. And Active and In Touch are now delivering that service, which is great because that comes with a whole package of befriending and other support around it now for those individuals. We had emergency food parcels first time round, but haven't had a call on them this time round. We do have a few still available, but Somerset County Council now also have some food supplies available for residents who find themselves all of a sudden having to isolate at home because they've been contacted by the track and trace. Or who have just become, we've become aware of really, that aren't accessing food and might need something immediately. Freme Community Drivers have continued to deliver prescriptions and worked closely with all the pharmacies. But actually, their biggest kind of uptake, if you like, over the last few months has been in people needing to access medical appointments and in particular to get to Bath and other hospitals. And so they, and we've seen that they've done a lot more. Particularly in response to Mendip Community Transport not running their usual services because they can't do them in a Covid secure way. So Freme Community Drivers have really stepped up to that challenge and we've supported them and made sure that they are strong enough to, with enough drivers and enough volunteers to pick up any extra demand now. And then, of course, Active and In Touch have continued to deliver their befriending service, which has been needed. Now more than ever, they've seen an enormous increase in the numbers of people contacting them for support. But they're also recruiting lots more volunteers to support that. So they've turned that service to a telephone service for the time being. And we're continuing to look at gaps and to map potential gaps into the future. We know that this second lockdown will have more far reaching impacts in the months to come, particularly the economic impacts and the number of people that are being furloughed and will potentially lose their jobs in due course. So we're obviously working really closely with FairFrem and the CAB and Fair Housing for Freme to make sure we're ahead of the game, if you like, and if we can be where we start to see trends in additional support needed. We are having lots of inquiries around mental health services and there has been some concern that there that there aren't enough local mental health services available. We know that the local organisations still have capacity, but actually over the last six months Somerset have brought all of the mental health partners together under one roof. And Mindline Somerset is now a 24/7 staffed telephone number, which provides access into all sorts of provision and they also have an online portal for that. For adults, but also for children and young people. So we've seen that across the county, all of those services have come together and created one front door, if you like. And many of them can be accessed absolutely locally. So people don't need to be travelling in the same way as they might have done in the past. So, but obviously we will continue to keep an eye on that. The county council are also currently trialling some additional support for young people. Unfortunately, it's not in this area yet, but we're hoping that it will be in due course. And we're working closely with Freme College and the other schools and various other partners just to make sure that everything is in place, because of course they're starting to see now the impacts of the first lockdown as children and young people have been coming back to school since September. And starting to get a handle on what those issues might be. And I guess the final thing to say is thanks to Mendip and the county for working with us really much more closely in the last few weeks to make sure that we are included in the information that they're sending out, but also they're listening to us and making those access and pathways for our residents much easier. So that flow of communication is really effective this time round. I guess, any questions?
Thank you very much, Kate. I've actually got a question. You mentioned earlier on about the Citizens Advice Bureau. Is that the local Freme CAB or are we dealing with a wider Mendip service or?
Yeah, so I discovered recently that the actual, the bureau has been dropped. So Citizens Advice Mendip is the organisation that we are talking to. They have not reopened their town centre venue and they're not anticipating doing that. But what they are doing is closely mapping the telephone calls that they're having. And their telephone lines are answered by local volunteers. And outside of their normal office times, it bounces out to a little bit further afield. But they have been, you know, pleased that they were able to really redeploy their staff and change everything around to a remote service that they think is probably benefiting everybody really extremely well. And that's certainly what we're hearing. We have the options now to contact them directly if we get phone calls in through our main line, which I should have said, actually, our main line operated as a front face at the beginning and it still does. So it's still available to everybody in Freeman. We can support residents to navigate through, to get access to the right services. So yeah, that's who we're very much working with, the local CAB, who are part of Mendip CA.
Lovely. Thank you, Kate. Okay. And great news that Mendip are working so closely with us now. That's really good news. Any other questions for Kate, please? Rob? You're on mute, Rob.
Yeah, just wondering about the testing station. Is that still going?
It is. I think they've changed their days. Rachel will be able to tell us exactly which days they're open, I think. But they are open three days a week, I believe.
Yeah, they are open three days a week and currently they're floating. It is their absolute intention to try and be there Sunday, Monday and Thursday. But they do, each week they assess and the testing centre can be, because it's mobile unit, it can just be sent anywhere it's needed. But yeah, at the moment it's three days a week.
And that's very much based on demand, I think, isn't it? So where the bookings are coming in, where they can see that there are sort of peaks.
They set them for 10 days in advance.
Okay.
Book into them sort of straight away. So we now know where they're going to be next week. But we don't know where they're going to be.
It all sounds incredibly positive. I mean, you know, congratulations, fantastic. And the question just popping into my mind is, is there some area that we're not on the ball with and to be attending to in some way or other? I mean, maybe you would have told us, but I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, well, I'd like to say no, but I'm sure there is some area that we've missed and we would really love to hear from anybody if there's anything that isn't happening. Of course, we're really supporting the neighbourhood networks to click back into action. And Hannah's doing a great job of supporting anybody that's interested in setting a new network up. So, but I think it's real testament to the town that we have and the way that people have responded as a community and rallied around each other and their neighbours, that we're not seeing some of the really significant issues that we might be otherwise.
Right. Thank you.
Any more questions for Kate? Lizzy?
Thanks, Anita. Just looking ahead. Obviously, two things. Well, one, Christmas is coming apparently. And some of the issues that we've seen, and particularly some of the mental health challenges and family sort of stresses and pressures could be made even tougher at Christmas time. So do you foresee a sort of change in service provision and demand and what we do at that point? And also looking long, in slightly longer term, some of the economic impacts of, you know, pandemic will take a few months to sort of fall through and there could be increases in demand as we head into the sort of the early New Year and into the spring. So again, just thoughts on that longer term picture, really.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we really do anticipate seeing those issues for individuals and families becoming exacerbated over Christmas. And then again, as furlough comes to an end. And as companies maybe start to make redundancies and we've got no idea what's going to happen in terms of lockdown. I saw something today that was suggesting we might open up for Christmas, but in order to open up for Christmas, this lockdown might be a little bit longer and then we would have another one in January to mitigate the opening up for Christmas. So, you know, that's kind of, is going to keep happening, the ups and downs. And we're working really closely with organisations such as FairFrem to make sure that they have the capacity and the resource to be able to cope with an increase in demand, because we do expect them to have it. And then, of course, there's lots of organisations that aren't meeting face to face because it's much more difficult for them. In part because many of their volunteers are perhaps vulnerable themselves. So that will start, we will start to see some kind of increases in demand in other areas, I suspect, too, as a result of that. So yeah, I mean, I guess what we're doing to mitigate that is to continue to map, to continue to stay ahead. Where we can, we are working really closely to draw down the facts and figures that county and Mendip have available to them. And yeah, and just keeping the dialogue with our partners going so that they know they can call on us when they need to. And we can call on them when we start to see something emerging. And obviously the schools are a really great source of information and all of those sort of partnerships give us a much better idea of what the experience for residents in Freme really is.
Thanks, Kate. There is actually a question from Lenka here. In your liaison with the police, what is being done with regards to increased drug use in the town and the associated behaviour, please? Would you like to take that one, Kate?
I can take that. We are obviously staying in touch with the police and making sure that we can, where it is appropriate for us to do so, support any increases in rises around issues like that. We know that there has been a slight increase in antisocial behaviour, particularly amongst young people. And our role as a town council is really to bring the statutory services, the relevant statutory services together to discuss what they can do and how they can do that. And then if there is an area that we might support in, we can do so. So we're currently looking at whether having some targeted youth provision might be of use in the parks and open spaces. And that will not only support a particular groups of young people that might need that very targeted support, but also make those spaces more available for everybody else to use them. So I think, yeah, absolutely, we continue that dialogue with those statutory services, including the police.
Thanks, Kate. Well, thank you. That was a really comprehensive update from you. Thank you very much for that. And many thanks to your team for all the work you're doing on it too. Sheila, do you have a question?
Sorry, it was just a brief one. It's just about the homelessness around town and the the provision that might be undertaken in the winter this year within Freme. And I know that there are some plans for that. I wondered if you could just outline them.
Sure. So for the last few years, the Zero Nights Shelter has been supported by Fair Housing for Freme in partnership with Elim, who are responsible for providing shelter for street homeless residents when the temperature drops below zero degrees for more than three nights in a row, or is projected to drop below zero degrees for more than three nights in a row. And that's when that emergency accommodation kicks in. Elim have detached staff who spend quite a lot of time out and about and stomping the streets and identifying and making sure they know where our street homeless residents are so that they're mapping them all the time and providing them with lots of extra support as well. So I guess the message is, yeah, those services really are very effective and kicking in as and when they can do. But they continue to support, offer support and advice to everybody. Does that answer your question, Sheila?
It does. Thank you. I mean, that was the general answer that I was looking for. But I have had communication with somebody in the Stonebridge Estate where there is clearly a fairly disturbed young man who I think is well known. I think he's been around for a while. But he, you know, he's getting a bit violent or at least abusive to people who are trying to help him. And I said, look, if that's the case, then obviously just go to the police straight away if you're concerned. Is that right? Or should I have? I also recommended to contact, well, I used the Fair Housing for Freme leaflet and I sent that to them.
Great. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, if there's immediate concern for somebody's welfare, then the police are the people to go to or Somerset County Council themselves and their social care teams. But the police can have an immediate response. So if there's an immediate threat to anybody else or an individual themselves, then the quickest, speediest way is 999.
Thank you.
Ellie, and then Nick, and then Rachel?
Yeah, all over town now, there are street link signs with the number of street link up on the community notice boards. And that is the first port of call if you're, if you see somebody, especially, well, not especially, but if they're new on the street, you won't know exactly whether they're in touch with Elim. And that would be the number that you call straight away, unless, as Kate said, there's an obvious danger to other people or to themselves.
That's what I recommended. Thanks.
Thank you. Nick?
Yeah, just briefly for your information, Sheila, I guess another, that young man was camping up on the Pax Under Estate for about three weeks. And I spoke to him a couple of times. He was very angry and not very cooperative. And I spoke to Elim about him and they said they knew he was and they tried to come out to him. He was equally very uncooperative and therefore moved to the Stonebridge Estate, gradually moving him around, I'm afraid.
Thank you, Nick. Rachel?
Just to say that Lenka had a question about people being homed in Freme overnight. And yes, I can confirm that we've worked with Elim and we will run the emergency shelter.
Thank you, Rachel. Okay. Lovely. Thanks very much, Kate. I think now we can probably move on to number four on the agenda, which is to approve the revised work programme and note the year end budget forecast. So can I pass over to you, please, Sarah?
That would be me.
Oh, that would be you, Paul. I beg your pardon.
No problem. Sarah's doing the money bit. Laura, can you put the PowerPoint up for me, please? Good. It's been an unusual year, as we've just heard. I've said there is a bumpy year and so far, because actually we're only about halfway through our year. Obviously, as Kate described just now, we've dropped a lot of stuff and swiveled around and done a load more stuff related to Covid and also trying to work out how we can build in the recommendations of the recovery panels. So this is an unusual year in that usually at this time, we come to you and say, yep, everything's going smoothly on the work programme. There's a couple of twitches here, but actually everything's fine. But it is different this year. There's more changes than there have been last year for obvious reasons. So what we did, we tried to sort of put all those demands for new staff. We put them through the management team, MINTA. And we came out with a revised programme that circulated in the agenda. It's six pages long, a very small font size. So I didn't think it would be appropriate to sort of put it up here. But in summary, we think that the work programme is deliverable. And albeit dependent on some external grants coming up trumps. If they don't come up trumps, then we'll have to have another look and see whether we can cut our cloth accordingly. Next slide, please, Laura. So looking at the six page work programme, you'll see on the right hand side, as normal we do every year, we've rag rated it. Where green is on schedule, everything's fine. Red is unlikely to go ahead. Primarily, this is because we just couldn't do them. A lot of them might have been events, for example, that we just had to cancel. And then there's the bit in between, which is the amber bits that are looking a bit risky. There is a little reason why they're risky, just a one or two or three words in each box to explain why we think they're looking a bit risky. As I said, there's some of them without external funding dependent. Some of them, we're really struggling to have literally the capacity to do it. But I think on the whole, if those of you are flicking through the work programme as I speak, that towards the end of it, there's a section on the list of recovery panel recommendations, which looking at that, I think I'm actually really pleased that we can sort of plan to implement. A lot of them are in train, but a lot of them in the second half of this year. So I think I'll leave it there. And if there is any questions, perhaps it might be better, Anita, if Sarah does her bit now. And then we can look to take questions collectively, because I'm guessing, but I wonder whether there might be more questions around the budget than around the work programme, but it's up to you.
Okay, no, that's fine. Are you all right with that, Sarah?
Yes, that's fine. Thanks.
Thanks. Do we still need to show this screen, do you think, while we're listening to Sarah?
Yes, I think we do.
Okay. Okay, I'll be reasonably quick. As Paul said, we are just over half the way through the year. And this forecast is therefore, we've got another half year to go. Do you have the next slide, Laura? The unexpected costs in the year have, of course, come from coronavirus and at the moment we estimate that they may be as much as 149,000. The areas that they cover are listed there. In some places, we have received a semi grant, for example, in neighbourhood networks, we achieved a grant for that post. And we've decided to try and run it for the full year and we'll be funding it for the second half of the year. We've lost sponsorship, we've lost town hall rental income, we've got extra costs in terms of PPE and cleaning. We've had to adapt the town hall for visitors, for public visitors and for staff to make it safer. We've got some expenses in home equipment and then recovery panels came up with additional suggestions. Can we have the next slide, please, Laura? So as the message was clear from Mendip early on, that they wanted parish councils to look at their reserves first. So we did some budget cuts.
So we did some budget cuts. We believe that we will make some savings come year end, but they are estimated. We have released earmarked reserves to the areas they were originally intended. And we are going to have to use our general reserves up to the value currently of £36,000. This is even though we've had some grant in from Mendip now of £35,000. If we have the next slide, please, Laura. So given that the extra anticipated costs are £149,000, we've made savings and used our reserves to the tune of £113,000. We will end the year at £202,000 in general reserves, which is having used up 36,000 that we started the year with. That's it.
Okay, so these are the recommendations. But before we go though, does anyone actually have any questions? John, and then Lizzie.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to congratulate Sarah for doing her forensic job as usual and making those savings. We've discussed this quite a lot. I am reluctant to go on the reserve, but I accept it's necessary and I think you've done a really good job. But the qualification was made that there are some grants we expect to get. So I just want to place it here that if we don't get those grants, we need to look again at the budget. Because again, that has implications for what will happen. You know, the assumption will be that we'll have to cover that out of more general reserves or some other way. So let's just be prepared. That's all, just a comment, really.
Lovely. Thanks, John. Lizzie, and then Anne?
Thanks, Anita. And John stole my thunder with the congratulations. But I'll say it again, because it's repeating, that congratulations and thanks to everybody involved in kind of steering the ship and particularly to Sarah for making all the numbers make sense to all the people like me who were asking really annoying questions. It's really appreciated how open and transparent the process has been for us. I wanted to pick up something that was in the report, but not in the presentation you just gave, which is around marketplace phase two, because obviously that's been the kind of big flagship capital project this year. And for many of us as new councillors, it's the biggest capital project that we've kind of run collectively as a council. And it mentions in the report that there is an overspend. We won't know what that is until we get the final figures through. But it does feel really important. It's something that we committed to in our strategy to reflect on the things that we do, look at the outcomes and learn from our experiences. So I wonder if there is a kind of project review that's happening or a report that's going to come back to councillors to just sort of tell the story of the project, set out why any overspend might have occurred and also pick out those outcomes. Some of the lovely unexpected things like having cafes on the bridge, as well as some of the things where we're going, actually, that didn't quite turn out as expected. And how do we prepare ourselves for the next big capital projects that we're inevitably going to want to do in the next couple of years?
Thanks, Lizzie. Paul?
I think Peter's probably best placed to do that. Quick, pass the hot plate.
Okay.
We'd be very happy to bring a report back and to present a review to you, including further information once we know it about likely overspend. And then, of course, you can reflect on that project and we can discuss any lessons that we may have learned, which we can take forward. So yes, we will produce a report as soon as we can.
Thanks, Peter.
Good.
Anne?
Mine was a congratulatory point. When I was reading both the work programme and the budget, I was struck by the lack of amber and red. And I think it's quite amazing. I mean, there are amber and red things there, but it's quite amazing that, well, all of the management team have managed to deliver most of what we set out to do before the pandemic struck, plus deal with the pandemic, plus start the recovery process. And I find it quite amazing. So well done, well done.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Anne. Steve, you had a point to make?
Thanks, Ian. Just a quick question for Peter, really. Do you think there's much chance, Peter, of us getting clawing any money back from some of the other bodies? If there is an overspend on the phase two?
Yeah. That's something that we've asked our transport consultant to have a look at. I think one thing we should remember, though, is that we expect a significant amount of the overspend to be related to the traffic management measures that went in. You know, we took a decision that we would close the marketplace to through traffic rather than pursue the two-way lights, which was in the original contract and tender. But what we will do is as soon as we have some information on the likely overspend, is we will let you know what we think we can approach the county council on. We think that there are some items, but I can't confirm that they're scaling in number terms at the moment.
Thanks, Peter. Okay, any more questions? I can't see any more hands up at the moment. Rob, I beg your pardon.
I'm not sure I quite understand, Peter. If there was a two-way traffic thing in the original plan, it seems that closing the street would actually, to my mind, actually make it a lot easier for them to get on with the work. And in any event, I mean, they did promise to allow pedestrians and cyclists to be able to go through the middle of it. And then they didn't because they said it was easier for them to store their stuff in the middle of the road. So far from it being an overspend, I think they owe us some money for making it more difficult for everybody.
Sorry, who are you asking should address that? County council?
Yeah, well, yes, either that or the...
The contractor?
The contractors, yeah.
Here, here.
Well, at the end of the day, the costs associated with the closure are much higher than they are with two-way lights, because there are all kinds of diversions that need to be put in place, the supervision of those diversions. And we took the decision to close the marketplace. So I think on that basis, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to ask the contractor to pay. And I don't think it would be appropriate to ask the county council to pay. However, there are some items, I believe, within the likely overspend where county council asked it to do things. And we should approach them for a contribution towards that. So I mean, hopefully that explains the situation.
Thanks, Peter. Sheila, you had your hand up?
Only to say that this is an obvious lesson to learn. I certainly wasn't aware that closing the marketplace completely was going to incur lots of costs to us. I assumed, like Rob, that it probably wouldn't, or that it was, you know, that we were totally unaware of this. So it's definitely one of the things to put down to learning. And Lizzie's point, basically I'm responding to Lizzie's point.
Lovely. Thanks, Sheila. Nick?
Yeah, on the same, I shouldn't be labelling the point. I know we had a discussion about closing the road and the benefit it would have for both safer for the potential Covid infection and also it would allow the contractors to work without having to sort of stop and let traffic come backwards and forwards. But I don't remember the additional cost factor being raised at that point. I don't remember it being pointed out, saying this is going to cost an awful lot more, potentially it will cost more. And I was also really interested in this comment about the signage and the supervision of the signage and the additional enforcement activity. I saw very little of the actual physical enforcement activity, apart from one guy up on Palmer Street for short periods of the day. It's just kind of interesting. Maybe it'll come out when we see some of the documents later. But I certainly wasn't aware that it was going to have a significant cost impact closing that section.
Would you like to come on that, Peter? Sorry.
Some of these costs, we weren't aware of right at the start. And this is typical with projects such as this. There will be variations to the contract. And in fact, we are still in discussion with a contractor about certain items that are variations to the contract and trying to ensure that the costs are minimised. So this is quite common with construction contracts such as this. However, I will ensure that when I bring this report to you with a review of the project, that I lay this all out for you so that you can be clear about what all those additional costs were. And secondly, where we feel we can actually ask the county council to make a contribution. And I believe that that is appropriate. There are some things that they asked us to do where they should make a contribution. So I'll make sure that's all in the report when I present it to you.
Lovely. Thanks, Peter. John, I will come to you in a second, but Maxine, you had your hand up earlier. Was this a question you wanted to ask?
Thank you, Anita. My question's been asked and answered. Thank you very much.
All right. John?
For me, it was just an issue around just what was discussed. I was under the, I saw that we had had some sort of consultant help us on this project, a project manager overseeing the project or something. But I think it's important we look at all those things, because, you know, we're talking about value for money here. And so, you know, if someone's in charge, you know, there are decisions that are normal variations, but there are also things that just weren't seen in the planning of the thing. So I think we can distinguish between them. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anything you want to add on that, Peter, or can we move on fairly swiftly?
Well, I think I should just add that some of the variations in the, to the contract, related to Covid-related precautions that the workforce in the marketplace had to take. Some of the restrictions emerged once the contract had been let. But it was necessary to keep the workforce safe. And when I present the report to you, it'll be clear to you that some of the additional costs related to the additional precautions that that workforce needed to take. So there are some things that emerge in the course of a construction contract where you're uncertain at the very beginning of the project. And that's why you have a contingency in place. And we put a contingency in place. And I'll obviously be able to let you know where we are in relation to that contingency when we have all of the bills in. But this year has been quite unusual. There are some things which we just couldn't foresee. And therefore, it would have been lovely to have foreseen them right at the beginning. But 2020 isn't one of those years. But we'll learn the lessons. I'm sure there are some lessons to be learned. And I'll make sure that those are highlighted in the report.
Thanks very much, Peter. Okay, I think we're going to take this to a vote now. So the recommendations are that we approve the work programme, as amended in Appendix One that you will have seen, to release the EMR 342, which was the fireworks from 2019, and the EMR 335, which is the town hall marketing. And thirdly, to note that the first year-end forecast, seven months into the year, for a balanced budget with a general reserve at year-end forecast to be £202,000. So would anybody like to promote, propose that? Okay, Lizzie and Sheila, to second. Thank you. And all in favour?
Hold the line, please. Yeah, I, that is, so John hasn't got his hand up, so that's a majority.
Okay.
Is that right, John?
Are you abstaining, John, or objecting? You're abstaining. Okay.
So that's just, that's majority then, Anita.
Okay, thank you. Right, thank you very much. We'll go on to agenda item five now, if that's okay, which is over to you, Paul, for an update on the unitary process in Somerset. Thank you.
Yeah, Laura, could you pop the slide on for me? There we are. I think the most important, I think it was last, the last time I updated you on this was June. What has been the significant event is that the government has now decided that there will be a unitary arrangement in Somerset. The question is now for the government to decide what type of one. But the doubt about whether it's going to happen has been removed. And I know I keep banging on about this, but I really want to impress on anyone that this will be the biggest shake-up in local government for a generation or two. The last time this happened was when the Frum Rural and Frum Urban District Councils were removed and replaced by Mendip District Council in this area. And it will change the way local government operates. I think there are significant opportunities for the community in Frum that we should take as and when they come our way. But in summary, I think the biggest opportunity that we have in Frum is that we may be able to have a bit more say over how things are done in local government. The timetable for this is in that little box there. It gets vaguer as it looks into the distance. But I think I just want to pick out a couple of things. The first line says that the business cases, which I'll come on to in a second in the next slide, they need to be refined and approved by the relevant principal councils and submitted to government by the 9th of December. So that process is nearly over now. There's an intensive period now going on with the stronger Somerset bid. And again, I'll explain what that is in a second as we speak. I've been involved in various consultation exercises. And the one Somerset bid, which is the county council's bid, has now stopped consulting. And both documents will be in the lap of the government by the 9th of December. Then there'll be a government consulting on those two business cases. The prime function there is they want to test whether it has the support of partners and the local communities. And if you can imagine government doing it in this little county of Somerset out in the west somewhere, that will be quite high level. There is no assumption from me, but I hope that we will be asked our opinion as a significant town council in Somerset. But that's a hope. So if you think that, you know, they'll talk to the NHS, they'll talk to the police, they'll obviously talk to the MPs, what else apart from that is unknown? And there'll be kind of quite private consultations, I think, as well. Rushing forward to the end of that table, the most likely date is that the new unitary will come online on the 20, on April 2023, with the elections for the unitary likely to happen 12 months earlier. So that's the kind of timetable. Next slide, Laura, please. I mentioned the competing business cases. There's a stronger Somerset, which is being promoted by the four district councils in Somerset. That one is proposing two unitaries in the current county boundary, east and west. So for us, in the east, they're proposing a merger and creating one unitary out of the South Somerset Council and Mendip Council. Obviously, that unitary will also take on the responsibilities currently being provided by the current county council. The good news is, at the meeting back in June, you approved a report and the recommendations on what we would like from a unitary arrangement. Key to that were seven recommendations that I've put into the report but didn't repeat here. But if anyone wants to ask what they were, that's fine. And the good news is that both of those business cases include all of our recommendations. Now, I think, and this isn't blowing our own trumpet here, but I think that is a really major achievement, because it has happened nowhere else in the country in the history of unitary. And we were responsible for that. And I think we all should be quite proud of the fact that we've pushed this debate along nationally in a Somerset environment and got those seven recommendations. The consultation that's been going on with stronger Somerset and previously with one Somerset is about, okay, what do you mean by those seven recommendations? How can we put some more fat on those bones? And would this work? Will that work? So I think we're in a really good place with our recommendations. I think both business cases... Have that in them already. They will retain them. The challenge is to ensure that they retain them beyond the scope of these business cases when they start building the new unitary in the middle of next year. So coming on to mid and next year, the next steps for us, I think, are to ensure that we keep the pressure on the the various actors in the game. These are primarily the principal councils at the moment. And then once shadow authorities are established. But certainly when the minister decides which unitary they want to go for. We need to get in there very quickly next summer to sort of start talking about the detail of these. It running in parallel to that, there are two things. One is, I've been working with the Society Local Council clerks to commission an. A report that's called something like at the moment, a toolkit for parish councils. Dealing with the unitary situation. But in summary, what that report will do is to put the fat on the bones of those seven recommendations. It's a how to guide. And I think that will be really useful come the first part of next year and rolling into the summer. To be able to use that document, if you endorse it, and I'll bring it back for that. To 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 really work out how they will happen. Just before I forget, I just wanted to sort of flag up that when I said I I've been involved, I have been. But Kate Haddad has also been involved in those discussions, particularly talking about how children are young people. And those 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 social services. The stronger Somerset would take on, a new unitary based on Mendip South Somerset would take on. Because actually, they're at the moment, they're being done by the county. So they're kind of having to create new structures. And that kind of thing was beyond the scope of our report, but Kate has been. I've had feedback, so don't get too blushing about this, Kate. I've had feedback from other people, say how valuable your contribution has been. And that's really reassuring, actually. I think that's great news. The other thing that's running in parallel is I'm beginning to to pull together the assets and services. That the district and the county cover at the moment. To see where, to see what it would mean if we took some of those over. I think it's reasonable to assume that we won't come into 2023 and be given a gift of the the car parks. It'll be a deal. And if it goes to, if it goes in the direction that I expect it to go in. It'll be a deal where we will illustrate how we will save public sector funding and public sector money. By doing things differently. Now, that that isn't a scary thought because, you know, in Frum, we're quite confident about doing things differently. It's, look at the bottom right of the of the screen there, for example. But it's it's working out what they may be, what those structures may be, and then working really closely. With with the unitary, with the probably very closely with the National Health Service. And working out how things could be done differently and taking on assets and particularly income generating assets. But also taking on liabilities and working out how we can do things differently to to save the public sector funding. But from my point of view as well, most importantly, is to provide a better thing than the community is getting now. If we can't achieve that, I don't know why we're bothering. Anita, there you are.
Thank you, Paul. I find this really interesting stuff and I think it's a scary but wonderfully exciting time to be a Frum town councillor at the moment. Because we really are seeing such a change in the wind. That, as you say, could give us lots of really good opportunities. So great update. Thank you. Any questions for Paul on that? John?
My question is really, so I'm really grateful for all the work that's been done. I think it's really, we're well positioned. But this, for me, this is fundamentally about bringing powers back to Frum. And of course, the funding and all that stuff that goes with it. And we have two major constituencies here with who are competing for our attention. In terms of the proposition, at least two, maybe more, but at least two. And I'm just wondering, what would be the possibility? Because what you said, Paul, is quite persuasive, whereas important, one of the we're lead, we're taking the lead. Is there a way that we could pole vault over these district and county authorities to central government to actually? Make them more aware of where we are with this, that we're really talking about bringing power back and we are capable. And I think it might be a third stream we could use to might give us a bit more voice. Within the stream with the other two major entities who are jockeying for position and power and jobs and money.
I think that's that's. That's a really, really good point, John. I I with I mentioned the second report that the SLCC will be commissioning. I think that is a good platform to go directly to our MPs. And I'm saying that plural. And also directly to Whitehall and Westminster. And I expect us to be saying, this is what we Frum think the unitary arrangement should be should be taking forward. The two, the two different approaches are basically slightly different ways of working. But the two approaches are about a different boundary. And I think when we get the report back and there's the, you know, come, I don't know, sort of something like January or February next year. There'll be a need probably for us to decide which one we would want to support. And I think at the moment. You're absolutely right, John. The one that we would want to support is the one where Frum gets the best deal out of it. And I think we can be quite assertive in in our view about which one does that.
Thanks, Paul. Andy, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks, Anita. Paul, can we assume then that? The the invite to Baines and North Somerset to be involved in this is kind of gone by the wayside?
As far as I know, Baines and North Somerset aren't interested. And as far as I know, and I've heard nothing from the various people quite involved in the debate. Had nothing from them to suggest that they will be putting a business case forward. So there's there's no smoke at the moment coming out of those places. And if I was if I was guessing, I would suggest that that's probably really unlikely. That there will be a proposal coming from Baines. Because I think our district and county would have let us know if that's the case, I think.
Okay, thanks. I can't see any more. Oh, Andy, sorry, you've got your hand up?
I just wanted to kind of ask a point of clarification that that my understanding is that if we went for things like parking. If we opted and presented a business plan or business case. That would come with two P staff. That would increase the numbers of staff working for Frum. Is that right?
I think it depends on their current terms and condition. For example, if they, if we take on car parks and the people who are employed in the car parks team. Be that back in the office but also on the ground. If they have sort of quote, normal local authority contracts. I think we would be going down a two P approach, yes. If that's not the case, the two P arrangement might not be. Insisted upon. But I think it's it's certainly something. So the bigger question around that, Ali, is is. Is what is the future role of the town council? Is it simply a bigger service provider? Or is it a relatively small organisation that that, as we've heard from from Kate in particular tonight. Enabling other organisations to do things and greasing the wheels of the Frum community machine. And. We would need to assess those as and when they they come online. I think there's there's probably a grey area between the two. That would suggest that we want to carry on doing the kind of thing we've been quite good at for the last eight years. Which is enabling and infusing and building with community resilience. But I think there's probably some call as well for us to be looking at. Taking on some of the responsibilities that we get really frustrated about. And I'm thinking probably open spaces, street cleaning, signage, maybe the cemetery. I'm not, you know, unless that's not go to the cemetery, that, yeah, what I suggested there. But but, you know, there are there are some things I wonder whether that we could take on a bit more. Because we really believe that we in Frum can do it better. And that might involve, we really believe that we could get a group of people in the town to do it better than we can.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did that did that answer you?
That's great. Thank you.
Lovely. Thanks very much. I can't see any more questions coming up at the moment. Rachel, is there anything in the Q and A that we need to look at?
Yes, we've had some comments from David Gosling. He suggests that unitary are not accountable and will be a disaster for Frum. But he says, remember the financial disaster with IBM Taunton Council, et cetera. And we also have John Clark asking if he can comment, please.
Okay. Yeah, welcome, John.
Good evening. Just wanted to make a couple of comments, if that's okay. Firstly, I attended a full council meeting today. And two points to raise about that is that. The council approved the motion that they should write to the Secretary of State to request deferment of the election. Because at this moment, although Paul is saying that it will be deferred, he hasn't actually announced that. And it's his decision to do that. But so Somerset County have now requested that. So he has the power to defer it initially for one year. But he may decide to defer it longer than that. That's his decision. Secondly, we were also told, Paul, today by the leader, that Baines and North East Somerset and North Somerset. Have both said that they are not not going to enter or submit any business case around their future. So they clearly to be, they're out of it as far as we understand.
John, just to clarify, were you, was this a county council meeting or a district?
Yeah, this was a full council, county council meeting.
County council, right.
Yeah, and it was David Fothergill who made that statement. So he's obviously, I assume, fully informed. I would like to make a couple of points. I think, as Paul was saying, this is a real opportunity for Frum. And putting aside which which model may or may not be chosen. It still provides opportunities for Frum. In terms of how they potentially take responsibility for services that Paul sort of indicated. But that may well come at a cost. And as Paul also indicated, the consultation will be at quite a high level, which concerns me. Because what concerns me is that the community of Frum or the community of Somerset. Has had very little opportunity to to comment. And certainly on the model that's chosen, they will have little opportunity. Because the consultation, as I understand it, is only about the model that's chosen. I may be wrong there, but perhaps Paul can clarify that for me. But the point I'm trying to make is, I just wondered, I asked a committee, whether Frum. Can make any efforts to actually try engage with the engage with the community? Because that's what Frum does really well or tries to do well about what sorts of things the community want. And I know Paul was saying about, you know, you get a lot of people saying they're not happy about the litter and the car parking, how they run and the cost and the charges. But I just wonder if there could be something, even if it's just an online consultation exercise, just to get a gauge from the community as best you can. About what the community feels about the the future. Because it could be quite dramatically changed. But as I say, there needs to be caution with that because there will be cost. And they will be look, any unity will be looking for transfers under a cost saving strategy rather than altruism. Sort of giving services over because they'd love to do that. Because they won't. They want to make savings with other unity. And that's part of their their business case, how they can make specific savings. I think that I think that was all. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Lovely. Thank you, John. Paul, did you want to come back on any of that?
I mean, John makes some really good points and completely agree with you. The one about consultation, I think when we know what we could consult on. I think it's absolutely essential that the Frum community is engaged in that debate. But we need to pick the right time because it's like, sort of, what do you want from the new unitary? Oh, you know, dog poo taken off the streets. Thanks very much. There's more to it than that. And I think. I think the the it's important to engage at the right time. We will, I think, you know, hopefully, I'm not talking out of turn there, but we I would certainly advise.
Thanks very much. Okay. So that was great. Thank you very much for the update. We're now on to a decision agenda item, which is the approval of the risk register for 2019. 2020, and I think this is down to you, Sarah.
Very quickly, so we manage risk on a day to day basis with Chris carrying out all the risk assessments in the many areas. Annually, we review the risk register and strategy documents, which we've done this year, and they were circulated for your approval. This year, there have been seven new rows included in response to COVID-19. Other than that, there's nothing major to highlight, so they are for your approval.
And also, Chris does an amazing job, actually, with all his risk assessments. He's permanently, seems to be permanently running around the town doing this. Keeps keeps him very, very well occupied. So I think, if there are any questions before we go to the vote on this? Okay, so can I have someone recommend that the chair signs the 2021 Risk Register Summary and Action Plan. On behalf of the council and approves the 2021 Risk Strategy Document. Ali, is that you proposing? Thank you. Mark, to second. Thank you. All in favour?
It's really funny because when everyone puts their blue hand up, the screen changes, doesn't it? And I have to start again. I can see no one objecting to that, so I think that's unanimous.
I think we are unanimous in that. Thank you. Lovely. Thank you very much, everybody. Well, that concludes the meeting. The next meeting of full council will be at seven o'clock on Wednesday, the 20th of January. And sadly, it looks as though we'll still be on Zoom at that stage. But thank you very much for everything this evening, everyone, and have a good evening.